Welcome to the speaking of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will then appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the scrutiny committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Convener?
Present.
Councillor McCready?
Present.
I have apologies from Bailey Scott. Bailey McPherson?
Present.
Councillor Lynn?
Present.
Councillor Short? I can see councillor Short. Councillor Rendall?
I'm here.
And Bailey Roberts. I saw... Yes. Thank you. Councillors Rendall and Bailey Roberts are substituting for Bailey Sawyers and councillor Cadell. That's the end of the roll call. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Let me just move on to the next item there. Declaration of interest, if anybody's got any interest that they feel that they should declare, please declare it now.
Convener?
Yes? Councillor McCready?
Yeah, item three, I think, report six and item three, Tactran is mentioned, I'm the current chair of Tactran.
Okay for that. Bailey McPherson?
Yeah, in relation to item six, I have relatives to our pupils at Seddylview Primary School.
Good.
Okay, if there's no more declarations, we'll move on to the next item, which is item two, management and renewal of thin-walled carbon steel pipework. This was previously submitted to the City Development Committee on the seventh of March.
Good. Can I maybe just start by asking a few questions? What in relation to the information that was sent to me? Because I asked a question at convener's meeting regarding the timeline of problems with the pipework and asking whether that's been circulated to everyone else on the scrutiny committee? And if not, can it be? And the other question in relation to the report itself would be, what indication of other sites within the city have we got this heating systems? So, you know, it's been about seven weeks, six or seven weeks from that report was produced. Have we got an ongoing problem in other areas and other buildings in the city? Turn around. Mr. Presswood?
Many thanks, convener. In terms of the timeline, I am not one hundred percent certain, but I'm not sure whether it's been circulated to all members. But I'll ask Mr. Martin to confirm. And obviously if that hasn't been done, we will share that with every member of the committee. And in terms of the audit of other premises, we are aware, I think as we said at the last committee, that there are thin-walled steel installation on the premises. At the moment, that has not been completed because the urgent priority is for the mechanical team and other relevant technical teams within the service to complete the negotiations to secure an appropriate contract to take forward and resolve the works in Dundee House. As soon as they have completed that work, they will then move on to concluding the audit. At the current time, we do not believe that there are any substantial issues on the scale of Dundee House in any other premises. But we are monitoring that carefully to ensure that the team are able to react in the event of any substantive problems. But we do intend, I think per the previous committee, bringing back a full report on other premises as soon as it's practical to do so.
Do we have an indication of the number of premises that are likely to have this type of system within it?
At the moment, I would prefer not to give an indication to that because we do not have a definitive view. I don't want to say something which subsequently proves to be inaccurate, but there are multiple premises. Having said that, I'll ask Mr. Martin to comment on the risk that those present. As I think at the last committee, we did highlight the fact that it appears to be larger, more complex systems which are undergoing pressure. And as this type of thin-walled carbon steel has been used in many properties, particularly smaller properties historically, it is just a question of monitoring and rather than any reactive works. But I'll ask Mr. Martin to come in as head of design and property on that, convener.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Robin. Just in terms of your first point, Bailey Keenan, the timeline should have been issued to all members of the council. So if that's not the case, if anybody would notify me of that and we'll rectify that as soon as possible. In terms of the point Robin's making, it is a time-consuming process. And as Robin says, there's nothing that is standing out at this stage. What's maybe worth pointing out is Dundee House obviously is a full installation. And the reason that this will take a bit of time to work through is other buildings may have part of an installation. There may be an operation made and other ones will be quite apparent where they'll have a full installation. But it'd be remiss to go through that process and list them without having the detail of that because clearly there'll be a sliding scale of quantity type of system. And if there is any risk and the duration, as Robin's outlined, of how long some of these installations have been in and been performing. So it will take a bit of time and until the engineers have the opportunity to gain access and poke about and do some intrusive work, that's when we'll have a full picture across the council estate.
Good. Can I just ask another question? Obviously, given the timeline, you know, starting around about 2014, I believe, it starts to get progressively worse from there. And that was the first sort of stage of having to pressurise the system again. Was there always inhibitors added into the system when new waters were added to it? So as the sort of corrosion protection would have been at its maximum at every time?
Chair, I'm happy to give a high-level overview of that and then hand over to Mr. Martin. The system is a closed system, so the inhibitors would have been installed at the time that the system was originally commissioned. And subsequent to that, the normal policy would only be that inhibitors would be added at each time the system was opened. And clearly there were two major events when the system had to be opened. And I think members covered those in detail at the last committee meeting. And I can confirm that at that time inhibitors were added back into the system to ensure that we were compliant with the approach recommended. But I'll ask Mr. Martin to come in and give more detail.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. Thanks, Robin. Yeah, I wouldn't add a great amount to that. In terms of the timeline, it is clearly the main points in terms of the catastrophic leaks that we've had. And the point you make about a unit in 2014, I've clarified with officers, was just the component failure. So that was a simple substitution. But what that didn't give us was any indication of any of the performance failures that were then subsequently encountered from 2000 and late 2017 onwards.
Yeah, just, I suppose every time the system's opened and there's fresh water put in in some description to make sure the system's fully pressurised, then an element of that inhibitor is diluted. You know, so, you know, it's trying to get a feel for us to whether there was some level of protection going in at each time. But, you know, I'll accept that that is likely to be the case. But wondering whether there was any other measures noticeable rust in the system that, you know, that needed to perhaps hey traps or some description as that water was pumped through so as it would clean out the system rather than continually decay.
Can I ask Mr. Martin to come on that? My understanding is that the system may not require traps, but Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
I take it it's a... It's one bit go up one bit.
Sorry.
Oh, it's the heat.
Sorry.
Sorry. Thanks, Bailey Keenan. So in terms, because it's a closed system, you're absolutely right that there wouldn't be any adjustment made unless there was the intervention. So in terms of water sampling, testing at the two main points of failure, they were carried out. And the balance in terms of the chemical dosing was carried out to bring it back to the appropriate levels. In terms of the equipment, there are pieces of plant in the plant room where samples can be taken away for sampling. But in terms of any sediment or what have you, on the basis of being a closed system, that should be limited. But clearly in this case, that hasn't been the way that the system's operated.
Good. Councillor Rendall, you're looking to come in with a question?
Yeah, thanks very much, convener. I have a couple of questions, if that's okay, probably for Mr. Martin. Just in the report, it's mentioned that it was the late nineteen nineties that the construction industry first noticed problems with these type of systems. And I just wondered, I know in the report also states that construction of Dundee House was between 2009, 2011. But obviously it was commissioned a good while before that. Is there any way that any of the designers or the professional bodies would have shared information about the failures that had come to light, especially in terms of the Belfast Hospital that's mentioned and Wales? Is there any way that that information would have been shared, that would have been known about at the time that the design was being commissioned?
Thanks, councillor Rendall. I think the difficult thing with this is that we're all in a position where we've got a lot of information now and it's readily accessible. And in speaking to engineers and experts that were carrying out work or maybe were installing it in sites at those times and are now consultants and designers, the information that we'll have now in terms of the behaviours of this particular material and how it performs weren't readily known. So the issue is with the two points that you referenced, although we know them now, at that time they weren't readily available. I think by nature, the construction industry were not great at providing feedback on a, I'll say, nationwide basis. And I think as well in terms of manufacturers and how they promote products, et cetera. You know, it's something that's counterintuitive to cascade that information. I think the other point as well is that from 2012 to where we are now, ten years, that's a long time in terms of construction, technology and research. And there's lots of things that have changed since then. And even more recently, in the last three, four years, engineers have been informing me about bacteria infections and heating systems and further sampling that we take for these that we weren't doing back in those days. So things have been moving on at great pace and continue to do so. So it's not something that has been readily known or available. And it's more that it gets developed probably on a six-year, six-monthly, twelve-monthly basis through people's research and education and through continual professional development. And what I can say is I can give reassurance that our officers are continuing to do that and look at proactive and innovative ways to protect our systems and ensure they can work in an efficient manner.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just trying to get to the root of whether best practice, where there's issues like that, you know, can be shared in time to stop something like this, but it's only when a problem occurs that then you can share things and say, well, that could have happened or whatever. Okay, thanks. And my second question was about at five point two, where you're talking about a leak detection system. Not being a technical person, but is that, does that consist of some technical equipment that's going to detect the leaks? Or is it a manual inspection, you know, programme that's going to go on?
Well, that's, again, that's something that we would develop on a case-by-case basis if required. And there are electronic systems available and that's something that we could implement should the need arise. Or it could be something as rudimentary as for catching and cascading some elements of water. If it's an isolated leak in one area of the building and that might be a temporary fix till a piece of pipework's then rectified at that appropriate point in time. So it's not, it's not something specific that the council have, but it's something that is available within the sector that we can look at using should the need arise.
Thank you for that. Thanks, convener.
Just another question, you know, we're obviously almost replacing like for like as we go. Has this system proved to be very ineffective as a heating system, given the number of leaks? And, you know, because, you know, for what, if a radiator's sort of full of air, as I assume it would be, then it isn't going to be very efficient at heating the building. So, you know, has it been a less than effective heating system?
Chair, can I ask Mr. Martin to take that question again? But just while I do so, I've asked the team here to confirm the timeline was sent to all elected members on City Development Committee. So everyone on scrutiny should now have that. But obviously if anyone hasn't received it, please let me know and I'll arrange for it to be recirculated again. In terms of the performance of the heating system, I'll ask Mr. Martin to answer that.
Thanks, thanks, Bailey Keenan. So as Mr. Presswood's outlined, in terms of the system in Dundee House, it is a closed system. And as such, at the time that was put in, you know, it was a modern design and installation in terms of what's used in the industry. And I think what is a positive, that type of system and how they're used and utilised across the industry has become more and more common over that time, i.e. the type of system and the effectiveness of that has been proven to be energy efficient. It's very difficult to say what level of drop-off we've had in the system over the period of time that we've utilised. That said, any leaks that have been detected have been minimised and purged very quickly. And it is only more recent times that we've had more prevalent leaks. So any inefficiency in the system would have been over the short period rather than when the buildings opened.
Can I just ask another aim for clarification? Is it eighty percent of the radiators that are to be replaced or is it less than that? Or what's the figure?
I'll just take that question again. I don't have the numbers in front of me, Bailey Keenan, but the system, all radiators will be replaced. I think that eight is a quantity that had failed to a date, I think it was round, if memory serves, it was round about February this year. But in terms of the installation, the pipework infrastructure and the radiators will be fully replaced.
Okay. Is there any other questions on this report?
Convener?
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a number. Can I just take, first one was just that the works at Dundee House, when it was being built, were they performed to the specification that was either set out by or agreed by Dundee City Council? So were satisfied that the work, the original work was done? Are we satisfied that the original work was done to a specification that was what the council was expecting?
Chair, I'll ask Mr. Martin to answer that question if I can.
Yep. Thanks, councillor McCready. So in terms of the Dundee House project, as members will be aware, it was designed by external consultants and the contractor that installed it was obviously not our own instruction services. So in terms of the specification and the design, the council would have signed off. It's a competent design if the, and in terms of how that's then obviously performed, albeit where there is the issues that we've now encountered. But in terms of the design and the specification, they would have been competent and signed off by the council?
I mean, I suppose my point there is, you know, as we've looked at Olympia and, you know, to some extent here as well, you know, I'm just trying to get my head around, is there any prospect that the council may have any claim over the contractors? I'm kind of getting the impression that that's a no for that one, unless somebody wants to, wants to correct me on that one. If I can move on, I mean, similar to the question that councillor Rendall asked, I mean, I'm slightly concerned about how knowledgeable officers were. I mean, we're told that the issue around, you know, the issues around problems that emerged, you know, in the early, you know, in the, you know, around about 2013, you know, just after the thing was built, were not readily available. I mean, I have to say, you know, in preparing for this, prepared for this, I did find, you know, an article on the BBC website about the Belfast Royal Victoria Hospital from the thirty-first of July 2013, which points out the problems which prevented that hospital from opening. And, you know, I think later in the agenda, there's an audit report that looks at, talks about, you know, professional, membership of professional bodies and things like that. I mean, are we convinced that we are using those kind of facilities? That sort of resource, membership of professional bodies, access to, you know, professional journals and things like that to keep us on the ball? And I suppose part of that question is, if we had recognised that, you know, if we'd said, for example, that that issue around Belfast Royal Victoria Hospital was a, you know, something that flagged a problem with this system, you know, are we still, you know, would that still have resulted in a big bill for the council? Or could we have done something, could we have done something at that point before, you know, before it's got to what I think is reasonably close to what we've decided that the whole system needs to be replaced at this point?
Chair, if I can pick that one up, because I think the linkage that councillor McCready makes with the report later on the agenda is important. If needless say, every service within the council has been involved in the formulation of the audit report and is clearly taking on board the recommendations very fully. So I know that Mr. Martin has carried out a review internally within Design and Property to ensure that all teams are taking on board relevant professional and technical guidance from all sources. And I'm sure Mr. Martin would be happy to say more about that. In terms of the Belfast situation, although it was aware, as you say, from 2013, fourteen, that there were substantial problems there, as far as I am aware, there was no formal briefing which came down through any of the relevant professional organisations until sometime later, I think potentially as late as 2017. But I'll ask Mr. Martin just to confirm, A, the process for cascade briefings and continuing professional development within the Design and Property Division, but also to give a view as to when we started receiving formal notifications around this issue.
Thanks, councillor McCready. It's a really interesting question that you posed there on the back of your first question. And I suppose it's two things from my perspective, that in terms of the pipework and we touched on about the specification being competent and the performance of thin-walled carbon steel, it's a competent material, a competent system if it's installed to the stringent parameters which we mentioned in the original committee report. So from that point of view, that's the one element of it. And but breaking away from that and speaking about our council officers in terms of what our officers do across the spectrum, whether it's mechanical, engineers in this instance, or any of the other designers for that matter, in terms of on a project-by-project basis, we're looking at having people who've got the competences and experience to carry out the design work on that basis. We've got their hardcore technical training from any studies they've done, continual professional development. We've got obviously the ongoing council's annual review, personal review in terms of any learning development opportunities. And it is very much in terms of being able to have and carry out the research, as I say, for each element on every project. And I think one of the good things is as well, as we've developed over the previous years, there's so much information that's now more readily available. Whereas even back in 2012, thirteen, it was paper literature and had to get updated, et cetera. Whereas everything is more current and online. So council officers have got that opportunity, facility, industry leaders, manufacturers in terms of utilising continual professional development. We're still able to do that remotely through the pandemic that we've all endured. So we do have robust systems in place and opportunities to ensure that everybody is at the level that's required to carry out the design work on the properties and systems that we are managing.
Thanks, thanks for that. Can I kind of go on from there? You know, and I mean, I think there's, you know, I think there's, my next question is about, it's partly about skills of officers, but I think it's more about the resource. Because I understand, you know, that we're probably asking, you know, the same folk to be, you know, knowledgeable, if not even, you know, maybe to call them experts, maybe pushing it a bit. But, you know, people to be knowledgeable across a whole wide range of things. And I think, you know, obviously that's complicated and difficult. So I suppose my question is, and it may well be to the chief exec, you know, are we convinced that the, you know, the council has got the correct mix of skills and resource to keep abreast of these kind of latest developments in, you know, in construction? You know, not, I'm making very clear, not criticising current staff. I think that I do consider that there's a question about capacity. And I would say, you know, I understand, you know, we all understand, you know, the terrible state that the budget's in. Everybody complains about the budget. I absolutely get that and we don't get enough money, you know, from Scottish or UK governments and all that sort of stuff. But, you know, it does strike me that spending thousands, possibly even into hundreds of thousands of pounds on more staff on, you know, on this area, you know, on the kind of general construction area, would, you know, would have the potential to save the council millions of pounds at this point in time. You know, millions of pounds in the middle of a cost of living crisis, the council tax going up, you know, paying for, paying for these repairs. So, I mean, are we absolutely convinced that we do have the correct mix of skills and resource that allows us to really manage these kind of projects and manage the property portfolio effectively?
Thanks, convener. So if I can, I'll come in and answer that question. Unfortunately, councillor McCready, I can't draw any direct correlation between if the council had invested hundreds of thousands of pounds' worth of staff, would that result in us being here or not being here? That's an assumption that I can't make. What I can say is that I take my assurance from executive directors and heads of service. And when they do alert me as chief executive to any areas of concern they've got, we look at what options and what solutions we have to address those. And in the past few years, the council has invested significant money within the property portfolio so that the council can maintain its properties and also look at investing in staff in areas where needed. I can see Mr. Presswood, he's got his hand up, convener. So if I can just pass over to him and hopefully that answers part of the question that councillor... that councillor McCready was looking for a response from me as chief executive on.
Good. Many thanks, Mr Colgan, convener. I think councillor McCready has asked a very important question. And I think if we cast our mind back around three years ago, there's no doubt that the budget was at that point fairly stretched. Because we probably had a large number of properties which were towards the end of their natural life or should have been demolished. Now, over the past three years, we've made considerable progress in removing the surplus property from the portfolio, either by leasing them to third party, third sector organisations very often, like the Limms Centre, like Dunlop Castle, in demolishing them or in selling them for development. So I think that has helped us in terms of the budget available per square foot, if you like, for building maintenance, but also in terms of taking pressure off the team. We have the same sized team around property maintenance. We have the same number of senior experienced staff. So we haven't taken any cuts over the past three years. So I think because we've now started to shed the surplus property, I do think the resources and technical expertise is adequate for the task at hand. And now we could always spend more, there's one billion pound property portfolio out there. But my belief is that given the additional resources that the chief execs spoke about, and given the fact that we've disposed of such a large amount of property over the past three years, I do believe the budget is fair, given the overall financial constraints of the council.
Thanks. Thanks very much. I've got another couple of questions.
Councillor McCready, can I maybe just ask the supplementary, based on that, just in relation to money? In, you know, you're saying, Mr Colgan said he's not prepared to make assumptions. And Mr Presswood suggests that the resources are adequate. You know, there seems a bit of a differ there. And I'm just really wondering, because in the education department, we saved a million pound implementing the policy by having a couple of extra staff. You know, so there has been an ability to save money having staff. So, you know, I'm wondering how, you know, Mr Presswood came to the the conclusion that we seem to have enough now, now that we've jettisoned a few buildings. Especially when, as councillors, we need the reassurance because we're hearing that architectural services are areas where we're unable to fill posts and technical positions were unable to fill posts. So, you know, we've got to be reassured that there isn't another disaster around the corner.
Chair, there may be short term difficulties in filling individual posts, but I'm not aware of any widespread challenges across design and property in terms of recruitment. And sometimes we need to supplement normal recruitment procedures by, for example, taking paid advertising, targeting professional journals. But generally, those approaches are positive and there are no long term areas where I think we can't recruit. We get tremendous support from colleagues in HR in order to try new methods where we can't recruit through normal approaches. And I can only really restate the points that I made earlier. I think for the task in hand, I think we have an adequate resource within the broader design and property team. And we will continue to review structures, reporting arrangements. And Mr Martin's brought a number of changes internally since he became the head of service for that area. So I think it's for us to ensure that we do the maximum within the finite resources available and continue also to downsize the council's property portfolio where appropriate to do so. And I think members are aware that we are now moving into phase three of the property rationalisation programme, which has been successful in previous phases in terms of delivering cost reduction.
Okay, I'll allow Mr McCready to continue. Councillor McCready.
Thank you very much, convener. Can I, can I, can I ask about section three of the report? Just for an update as to whether the works have started and obviously very aware of, you know, media reports around, you know, rising costs and everything at the moment, just to get a reassurance that the financial implications are still accurate.
Chair, happy to come in on that. And again, I'll hand over to Mr Martin for the detail. At the moment, the reactive works are continuing within Dundee House and that assists us in terms of planning the work programme and in negotiating an adequate contract for the works to be carried out. At the moment, we have not yet signed the contract, but I believe that we anticipate that in the near future, we will be able to conclude that. That will give us a definitive timetable for the works to be carried out and a fixed price for the works to be carried out. And I have asked Mr Martin to ensure that all appropriate work within the building around the mechanical systems, particularly the pipe work, is discharged going beyond the original remit to make sure that there are no major failures within the building in the future. And so I'll ask Mr Martin just to come in and give an indication of like timetables and the potential impact of construction industry inflation on the final price.
Good. Thanks councillor McCready. So in terms of the commercial process, I wouldn't want to get into too much detail on this specific project based on the commercial sensitivity. But what I can say and assure members of is the same principles and platform that officers are using to carry out this in terms of the detailed design, developing a sequence of work, making sure we do it on a phased approach to have minimum disruption across and throughout all the services over this period of time. And the negotiation takes place. We've got a robust database of historical information, rates on a lot of mechanical services in terms of they've been previously tendered on a competitive market. So we're able to compare those and have good dialogue and negotiation to conclude the commercial. So and I can reassure members that in terms of the market and what we've been seeing for the pandemic and the various reasons for inflation from Brexit and the current situation across Europe, that some of the rates and prices that we're seeing have been a lot more stable than we would have thought in the first instance. So that does give us some reassurance. And I would hope that that will be the case when we finalise the price in the very near future.
Thanks. At 4.43 in the report, it says that in order to minimise the impact of these works and prevent closure periods in the building, the replacement contract requires to be carried out between April and September. Obviously, April is now nearly gone. Are we still on track to do that between April and September?
Chair, the reactive works are currently on site. And I think that gives us a considerable degree of understanding of the work programmes. And I'm currently on floor five and the works are continuing above me. And so I think it's fair to say that we are aware of the works, but there's no disruption to normal to normal work within the building. And we simply need to be flexible in terms of moving around the building. And where there is the potential, we'll obviously know this once the final programme works is now, if there is the potential for the works to extend beyond September, Mr Martin now advises that there is the potential to isolate individual floors to ensure that the remainder of the building remains fully functional, but the area affected may require to remain closed for that period. But I'm not sure, Mr Martin, if you'd like to add to that.
I think the only thing that I would add to that is that, thanks councillor McCready, I think it's fair to say that that period of time will elongate. But part of that reason is on the basis of accessing pipe work, safe means of working in terms of bringing materials into the building, et cetera. And also from the point of view of doing it on a phased approach to ensure we've got continuity of service. And as Mr Presswood outlines, minimal disruption for officers carrying out their day to day duties.
Okay, I mean, I wouldn't want officers to be expected to work sitting in the cold, but thankfully Jacob Rees-Mogg might allow, his remit doesn't reach up here and people might be allowed to still work from home at that point perhaps. I've got, I've got one last question, convener, if that's okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I think this is probably for, again, for the chief executive, for the director of corporate services perhaps. I mean, on the basis, and I think I've asked similar questions before, but on the basis of the costs that are before us today and the potential perhaps for other similar repairs that might need to be carried out over the lifetime of the contract, are officers still convinced that the sale and leaseback of Dundee House presented best value? And if so, is it a policy that officers are considering for any other council buildings?
Thanks, convener. If I can just start off answering the question, then I'll pass over to Mr Emmett, section 95 officer. In terms of the lease agreement that's in place, it was a full repairing and ensuring lease. So if we had still owned the building, then we would still be liable for these costs. However, I do accept that when the paper was agreed in 2019, it did generate a £433,000 revenue saving along with a capital receipt which was invested in the city of 3.8. So based on the information available to me and indeed the fact that the council would still have to incur the cost, it would represent value for money at this point. And looking at whether or not the council would continue selling leaseback in the future, that's not a decision councillor McCready that has been reached. And if the council did want to consider that and there were other buildings they would look at, then we certainly would follow the decision making process and elected members would be involved in any further decision, should that be something officers pursue. But it's not something I'm aware of that has been considered at this time. So convener, if I can, I'll maybe pass over to Mr Emmett to see if there's any other information he'd like to add.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, convener. I think, I think just perhaps to emphasise the point that because of the nature of the lease agreement and Mr Colgan set out there, financial benefits to the council at the time, it doesn't change the position in terms of responsibility for the works and repairs. So whether or not the lease had been entered into, we would be faced with having to do repairs to the building and continue to do so, chair.
Good. That'll be that. Councillor McCready.
Yep, thanks very much to officers for their answers.
Can I maybe ask another question? I think the outage, the water system caused the outage in the computer room, I think, some couple of year ago and took the building out of commission for a few days. I'm just wondering now that we leased part of that building to another agency, whether we would be subject to any costs for, you know, loss of their productivity or otherwise. Should anything like that happen through this process of change while the work's ongoing? Mr Presswood.
Yeah, chair, many thanks for that. And subsequent to the city development committee meeting, I have spoken to the director of corporate services at Social Security Scotland to ensure that they are aware of this issue and to apologise in advance for any potential disruption. And then we've remitted the design team to engage with them about how we ensure continuity of service for Social Security Scotland. And so, you know, their initial reaction was to appreciate that there would be disruption. I think to welcome the fact that we'd reached out to them early and to start a dialogue about how we can minimise any potential problems.
Okay. Well, thanks for officer's response on that. No doubt we'll maybe revisit it at some time at scrutiny committee based on the reports that are likely to come forward on other buildings. Any other questions? Or shall we move on to the next item? Is this report agreed? Okay, so you say we'll move on to the next item.
Okay, thank you. The next item, item three is the internal audit reports.
Okay, David, are you leading the series?
Thank you very much, convener. This is our normal, one of our normal reports that we put up to each of the scrutiny committee and covers internal audit reports that have been agreed since the last committee. So in this case, we've got six reports to consider. So I'll go through them one by one if that's possible. Then everybody can ask any question they may have.
Okay.
So the first report on page seven is in relation to the electoral register, thanks electoral registration. So this is where we did a review of the arrangements in place for maintaining the electoral register in line with the 2020 devised annual cameras and arrangements and corresponding legislation. And the conclusion that we drew from this report was that while there is basically a sound system of control, there are some areas where it is reviewed that improvements can be made. And the main area that we commented on is in relation to the EROS, which is the system that's used by the electoral registration team. The user accounts are promptly logged when access to the system is not required, which would include levers and also the accounts of those who only maybe require intermittent access. We've also asked the team to consider whether the supplier and IT staff also require the same level of access as the members of the electoral registration team and then including that any access to the systems administration function. And within the team themselves, we've asked for a review to be carried out to ensure that the review of the systems administrative access is carried out with a view to restricting the number of team members who have access to that key element of the system.
Billy McPherson.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you, convener. My questions really are on this issue about access to the system and user accounts are locked when access to the system is not required. Now, we've had this sort of issue raised regarding a number of reports recently. And I was just really seeking an assurance that internal audit, well, first of all, that we have a policy in place of making sure that all systems that we have regularly review user access to ensure that there are no users able to access the particular system when they no longer should have access. And I'm not necessarily talking about levers because I know they'll drop off. I'm talking about people, for example, who change roles or for whatever reason, no longer require the system, access to the system they previously used. And also if, as a matter of course, during an internal audit inspection, that sort of issue is used. You know, obviously, we had issues regarding a substantial fraud not so long ago in relation to one particular individual and the level of access that that person had. And I think we have to take a quite cautious approach to access the systems and ensure that only those people that really, you know, only those members of staff who really require access have that access.
Okay. It looked like Mr Emmett was coming in first and then I'll bring you back in again, David.
Thank you, convener. I won't speak for internal audit, but Jackie Capel, in her role as head of IT and customer services, has written to management team reminding them of the need to have a proper look and control of access to systems when there are changes. Particularly, I think, as Bailey McPherson is alluding to, in both levers and in people changing roles. So that's something that we're mindful of as something that has cropped up on a couple of occasions through the work that David has done. And as I say, from a management perspective, we've highlighted the need to make sure that that is being addressed.
Okay, thank you. David, are you going to respond as well?
Thank you very much, convener, and thank you councillor Bailey McPherson. So in relation to the audits that we carry out, we will look at user access and administrative access where it's relevant within any of the orders that carry out. And we've done that more often in some of the orders that we've carried out. And obviously, some of the other reports that we're referring to today do refer to user access and system access. And in relation to the 2223 audit plan, we have put an audit, inter audit plan, which is one of my later reports, which is to have a look at user access and permissions as part of the wider work within the council. We have done that a few years ago and this is just another case to have a look at it again and refreshing it.
I'm grateful for both these replies and it's good to see the proactive approach being taken. Going back to Robert's point about Jackie Capel proactively writing out to departments, which I think is a very sensible and proactive thing to do. I assume that there is no response from a department that will be followed up. There's an expectation that a department will reply confirming that they have actually undertaken that as opposed to just a letter or rather more likely email going out and not being followed up.
Convener, with your permission, perhaps let Jackie come in?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks Bailey McPherson and Bailey Keenan. Yeah, so as Robert mentioned, I have put out an email to all heads of service and exec directors, reminding them of the need to carry out a review of user access. And in addition to that, what we're also looking at with people services on the back of this email is an automated process. So you mentioned levers earlier, Bailey McPherson, and there is an automated process where someone leaves the council that we automatically shut down their access to the corporate systems. We're looking at an automated process with people services of those that have moved section or services. so that service departments can actually carry out a physical check on user access on a regular basis. So, so we are proactively trying to look at these to make sure that services are carrying out regular reviews.
That's very helpful. Didn't quite answer my question though. You, you've written, you've emailed out to service departments. Is there a requirement on their part to come back to you to confirm that they've actually undertaken this? Or will you be following it up? Because it's fine telling them, but say they don't do it.
Yeah, no, I didn't ask them to come back to me to confirm that they've actually carried out that review. But I'll take that comment on board and we can put out a follow-up email asking them to confirm that.
That's very helpful indeed. Thank you.
Okay, I think Council Short, you've got a question?
Yeah, I can't imagine anybody not doing what Jackie tells them to because I know I do. However, I just wanted to, to have a quick check, and this is purely from the point of view that things constantly change, including departments and councils. And we're a bit of an outlier when it comes to this process because obviously we do it in-house. But T-side auditors do the service for those in Angus and also in Perth and Ross. So I'm just checking that we are still in a position that we believe that we are getting the, the best value service, doing it within the house, rather than buying the service from T-side assessors, if that makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense to me. You want to subcontract it, but I'll ask officers to confirm whether they should or shouldn't. So are we going to respond?
Convenor, it's not something I'm familiar with, but I'm happy to come back to Council Short on that point. It's not something I've been involved in in my time yet, but, but there's obviously benefits to, to the synergies of doing the work in-house.
Yeah, okay. It's just, obviously, it's been since 1996 that we've done it in-house. And it's just to make sure that it is still set in with the best value, doing it in-house, as opposed to doing it at assessors if they're already doing it. Departments change, so I just want to make sure that we are getting the best. And if can't do it in scrutiny, we're kind of do it.
I thought there's been reports in the committee before on this, giving an update on it and how it was best on in-house. But, you know, it has been a while for us to see anything like that, so.
You're much longer than the two than Convenor.
I've just got a great memory. Okay, officers, I've got back to you on that. Is there any other questions on this report? In which case, David, then we'll move on to the next report, please.
Okay. Thank you, Convenor. So this second report is in relation to the legislative and regulatory updates. And this was a review of the arrangements in place within a sample of services to ensure that relevant new or changed legislative and regulatory requirements are identified and where appropriate addressed timely. So as Council McCready referred to earlier, this was partly in relation to the work that was, we were asked to do in relation to the issues that were raised from the previous committees about the roof repairs. So we, we have carried out this piece of work across the council, wide across the council, to see what arrangements are in place. So the principal conclusion we drew from this is that while there's basically a sound system of control, there are some areas where it is viewed that improvements can be made. The main area we comment on is that there are no formal arrangements for determining what information on legislative and regulatory updates should be shared and who it should be shared with. But professional judgment is used to decide who needs to know this information, and that's across within all services. We've made further recommendations basically to remind, for the council to remind services of their responsibilities for ensuring that current legislation and regulations are adhered to, that effectively communicated and comprehensively shared throughout the council where applicable. Formal arrangements for policies, procedures, guidance, et cetera, and training should be put in place. And in addition, services should formalise their arrangements for ensuring the relevant professional staff have access to membership, government agencies, public bodies, regulators, professional bodies, professional organisation and trade associations. So similar to what Mr Martin was talking about in the previous report. And what was said is to improve arrangements within the council for dealing with legislative and regulatory updates. The services and team should consider sharing details of their current arrangements in order to share and implement any areas of good practice. And then within the bottom bit there of the report, we do provide some areas of good practice, which were identified as part of the work that we carried out.
Yeah, thanks for that. I'd like to, like, Council McCready.
Yeah, I mean, further to the, the point I was making in the previous, previous item. I mean, and, and I take the point that's just been made, I think this is really important. Given that some roles, as I understand it, require, you know, membership of a professional body or a particular qualification, although in this context, particularly membership of professional bodies may, may well be a requirement for a post. I just wonder how that is, how that's monitored once the person's in post? How we, how we go about ensuring that the, that the, the, the individual is doing all that they can? You know, is using the, the, you know, whatever access they have to information from that, from that professional body? And, and how we're making sure that, that the, that such information is, as has been said, cascaded to others for whom it's relevant?
Convenor, if I can come in on that question first, and then perhaps other officers come in. So within the council, there'll be a suite of different roles that require particular qualifications to be held. Some of those predominantly within the Section 95 Officer posts, the monetary offerings posts, and also throughout engineers, teaching, social care staff. So I think, Council McCready, what the reports outlined then is in some cases, the internal audit have been able to identify good practice where that information is held and has been followed up, but it's not happening consistently despite the report having a sound system of control in place. So what the actions will look to do is formalise that more across all services in a consistent manner. And we're also looking at other areas to provide that assurance to myself as Chief Executive and also to the council in terms of strengthening the risk management group to include assurance, and also looking at additional questions and support within the annual governance statement. So at the moment, there'll be different systems that capture that information, but what we're looking to do is formalise that so that the good practice that operates in some areas is applied to all council services. And the executive director, who I see Convenor's got his hand up, will be leading on behalf of the council management team and delivering those actions in quite a quick timescale. So if it's acceptable to you, Convenor, if I can bring in Robert, I'm sure he'd just like to add to the answer that I've given.
Sure, Robert.
Thanks, Chief Executive. Thanks, Convenor. So, so what we have, what, what I have done is we have drafted a brief for an updated risk and assurance board, which will be going to the next corporate management team to agree the way forward, which will have a specific remit to provide the assurance, I think, that you're looking for in relation to recommendations by internal audit, legislative changes and professional staff updates so that it picks up the points that Mr Vernon has highlighted where there is good practice, but we need to make sure that there is evidence and that that's documented across the council. So we're, we're moving to establish a structure which will provide that assurance to you going forward. And obviously, you'll receive an update on that when David comes back to do an update on the, on this particular audit in due course.
Council McCready, have any more questions?
All right, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, Billy McPherson.
Thanks, Convenor. Yeah, my, my question's really around this issue of formal arrangements. I, I presume we're going to be documenting exactly what is expected of officers in relation, for example, to changes in regulations, because that was where we got into all this difficulty in relation to the, the roof tiles situation. Because there has to be an expectation that staff understand, and, and management rather, rather than staff. I think management understands they have a sort of formal arrangement in place to ensure that if there is, for example, a change in, in, in regulation, that that, that feeds its way through. And I suppose my question in relation to internal audit really is about spot checking that. It's fine getting assurances.
Right, that's your name, I've got.
Sorry, it's fine getting assurances and, 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 you know, a documented arrangement. But I think what we do need to know is that internal audit will spot check and change, for example, a change in legislation to ensure that the relevant staff have been appraised of that and that, you know, necessary actions have been taken as a result of any change in law or legislation.
Chief Executive.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor, and thanks, Bailey McPherson. So you're absolutely right. What we will be looking to do is formalise that arrangements for legislative and regulatory updates so that they flow through the staff in a consistent way, but also through internal management teams and potentially up to the council management team where required. David may want to provide comment, and I'm assured that going forward, we will look for internal audit to carry out that spot check. But the other thing that Robert and I are considering is whether or not within the risk team, we look to appoint or allocate resource around providing assurance so that what we've got is the spot check being done by internal audit. But prior to that, an officer making sure that the support is in place to services should they need that so that that consistent approach, whether it's from children and families, neighbourhood services, city development, corporate services, et cetera, is consistent. So the answer to your question is yes, we will formalise it. Internal audit can consider spot checks, but there is that additional step that I'm looking into place by having that assurance post that would then feed into any internal audit work that may come back to scrutiny.
Okay, that, that's a very helpful response from the Chief Executive. I, I, you know, you indicated that internal audit can undertake spot checks. I would really like an assurance that that is actually going to happen. Because I think in, in light of what has, you know, and, and the method in which it's going to happen, the, the extent to which it's going to happen, because it gives elected members some reassurance, given, you know, what happened in relation to the, the, the particular housing issue, that we don't, you know, that we do everything we can to ensure that we don't have a situation again where there's a change in regulation or legislation and we don't actually act on it.
Good. David, are you going to make a comment on that?
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Thank you, Chief Executive, yes. And we obviously will do follow-up work on this audit as well as we go, as we go on throughout the year. So we will, we will do a spot check of a sample of some of the legislations, especially the new ones that have been put in place. I also understand that in the annual governance statement checklist that's completed by each of the local, sorry, each of the service departments have got a specific question in there as to what proceeds, processes and procedures that have been put in place in terms of actually making sure that this can actually be done. So we will, we'll also review the answers that come from that question here as part of our annual governance work and then tying that in together with the, the follow-up work that we'll do. We will do spot checks in this area.
That's very helpful indeed. I'm, I'm grateful to both yourself and the Chief Executive for very helpful replies. Thank you.
Can, can I maybe ask the question on this report? I mean, you, you suggest there's a reasonable sound system and, you know, we've had the, the need to spend £4 million because a piece of legislation wasn't adhered to, or £4.5 million. You know, environmentally, going to dump no end to tonnes of rubble because so much slates will be destroyed as they remove them from roofs. So, you know, no, no great picture whatsoever. Yet we, we suggest that there's a sound system there. Just wondering at what stage you actually went in to do the audit and as to whether there had been a number of changes made to procedures. So you're auditing something that's already been tweaked, you know, we're, we're working to something new or, or we're looking back in time where the error was made and we're, you know, we're having to make any changes. Given that, you know, each department's probably got an ISO accreditation, and when a customer complaint was received, then you would think we would be starting the process of looking for the root cause and identifying that and looking to make change in legis, in practices within each of the different departments that would have seen, you know, a change. So it'd be useful to know if we're, we're, we've had a number of changes. So we're, we're looking at the most up-to-date piece of procedure when, when it comes to the audit that you just done.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. Yes, we, we, we were aware, made aware of the potential issue in March, April last year when we pulled our audit plan together. So we had the, we had the audit in, in the plan at that point in time. However, we didn't carry out any of the detailed work until after the, the report had gone to the Policy and Resources Committee. So when the, the issue around the roofs was actually raised. So in terms of the work that we carried out, which was done after that, that report was done, we did look at the arrangements in place from that point in time onwards. However, we did, we did go back, you know, and ask people what, how they did it and what they did and how they pull the information together.
So, so, so do you think through the audit then, that the earlier stages, you, you've identified that a number of changes have been already made that should have made you make that conclusion of there seems to be a sound system and that potentially we had a system that was broken in the past?
Well, we didn't, we haven't, we haven't looked specifically at the issues around the roof and repairs. As you know, that's been taken forward by PWC. But we looked at, we looked at the wider arrangements for looking at legislative and regulatory updates in terms of what's actually in place now and, and what had, basically from the officers that, that we spoke to, how they have taken this forward, obviously, you know, probably in the last sort of six to 12 months. So there may well have been changes that were made. So the, the, the work that we carried out looked at what, what they're actually doing at the moment and how, and how it's brought together.
Would any officer, any other officer then want to make a comment about any potential changes that they made in, in advance of David doing an audit once, just after that report? Given, you know, we, we received the complaints about the roof some considerable time ago. And as I say, if we've got an ISO accreditation through different departments, each of them should have been looking at it. There's a defect in the problem land we may, and, and we, have we got an issue in it, in, you know, in passing an audit under ISO 14001? If that's what you've, each department's accredited to spend a lot of money on these systems.
Thanks, Convenor. I'll maybe come in on that. I, I'm not sure officers have that level of detail to answer that specific question. I do know within the report that was considered by Policy and Resources Committee on Roofs, it did outline the number of steps that Mr Presswood and Mr Martin had taken in the team with regards to training. And from memory, but I'd need to come back to scrutiny members, there is an aspect of the PWC report where they are looking at those qualifications or those standards that have been held. So perhaps your, your question might be answered in their report, but I do think officers would need to go back and look at that to give you a concise answer.
I think it'd be useful to know whether they'd made changes before David done his audit.
Thanks, Convenor. As I say, I think it would be difficult for services to confirm exactly what changes. David's looked at the process that's in place, and I would suggest has looked at minutes of teams' meetings, et cetera. So for me, it's about the assurance about going forward, that we're working in that regulatory and legislative framework. So I'm happy to have a discussion about further assurances that scrutiny committee may want.
Just, just that normally if there's a defect raised through a quality system, there would be an audit trail of how that was addressed. And that would even have an audit trail if you changed the procedure in some way. So, you know, perhaps it might lie within some of these departments, but it'd be useful to know whether there was that level of change.
Okay, thanks, Convenor. But as I say, we'll need to come back to you with regards to that question.
Okay. Is there any other questions on this report? Okay, then we'll perhaps move on to the next one then, David.
The third audit report is one of our, is the first of our follow-up audits. So this is the follow-up audit of the review of the travel and subsistence. So we carried out a review to assess whether or not the recommendations agreed by management in the previous audit report have been implemented within the given timescales. So the principal conclusion that we drew from the follow-up work, which is on this one, is that the recommendations agreed with management still required to be implemented to overcome the original control weaknesses, where I highlighted in the original review. Sorry, two seconds, I've lost my place. Yeah. So then, so the, and the main areas which we commented on are in relation to the travel and subsistence policy. So this is expected to now be implemented following trade union consultation. And once that consultation is concluded, the council will formalise the document and share it with employees. In relation to super users and then that were in place at the time of the original audit, the number of super users has been reduced from four to two. However, we didn't know that there's no documented evidence that a routine review of super user activity account is actually taking place. And then management and payroll responsibilities in relation to reviewing and approving expense claims have not been communicated within the wider council service areas. But they have been, they have been identified and have been integrated into the new travel and subsistence policy. And then finally, in relation to the secondary review of expenses that's conducted. And then finally, in relation to the secondary review of expenses that is conducted by the payroll team, we were unable to identify any documentation on a sample basis to show that that's actually taking place. So we've made another recommendation. This actually takes place.
Okay, thanks for that, David. Fraser, do you look to come?
Thanks, thanks, Convenor. My question's really around the implementation of the new travel and subsistence policy because the, the, the report indicates following trade union consultation, which is scheduled for March 2022. Well, this is the end of April. So I was just really wondering, has that happened and is it implemented?
Convenor, if I can maybe ask Frances, Greg or Robert Emmett to give an update on the position with regards to the trade union consultation? I can see Frances as well.
Yeah, cheers.
Thanks, Chief Executive. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. The, the policy has been consulted on. It, it was slightly delayed in relation to the match strategic meeting because we had only been having COVID discussions with the trade unions at that point in time. And we, we then re-established our strategic trade union meeting in March where we had to discuss, an imperative to discuss the budget with them. So we have actually now discussed, consulted and agreed the implementation of the, the policy. We've pulled everything into one policy where it's very clear as to whose responsibilities are, are whose. And this will be communicated, implemented in the next few weeks. And there'll be a new employee publication and communication alongside that as well.
Good. That's, that's very helpful. It just provides the reassurance that, you know, things are moving and, and consultation with the trade unions has happened. So grateful to Frances for that helpful reply.
Good. Any other questions on that report or shall we move on to the next one, David?
Okay, thank you. So this one again is another follow-up audit. This was the follow-up of review of Mosaic. So this is the system that's used within children and families and social, Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership. So again, our, our objective was to review whether the recommendations have actually been put in place within the given timescales. So again, the conclusion drawn from the follow-up work is that the recommendations agreed with management required to be implemented to overcome the control weaknesses highlighted in the original review. We've identified the COVID-19 pandemic has had significant operational pressures on the implementation of the, the actions within this report. And there is limited progress being made. However, two significant and one routine recommendations have been made. While progress has been made against all the recommendations, further work is fully required to mitigate the remaining risks that were identified within the original report. So the main areas that we're referred to within the bullet points. So the process for review and approval of user access has now been formalised. However, the process has not been fully completed to document the level of access which is appropriate for each of the roles within the relevant service areas. And this is actually continuing. The numbers, again, in relation to the number of super users, the number of super user accounts for the Mosaic system have been reduced from 10 to four, which 10 was in place at the time of the original review. However, we understand the super user access is now monitored. We were unable to find any documented evidence that the review has actually taken place. So again, we've recommended that that gets carried out. The responsibility for incorporating changes to legislation has been explicitly documented within the call-off agreement with the supplier. And the system change process has been documented and assigned responsibility for further enhancements to Mosaic to both the steering group and the Mosaic project board. However, the terms of reference for the groups are still, are still undergoing revision. So that one's still just partly completed. And then finally, in relation to benefits realisation, the benefits realisation assessment of Mosaic has not yet been fully completed. And like, once again, and the process has commenced and the benefits, the finance modules have been assessed, but the full assessment of the system hasn't actually been fully completed. We'll be given assurances that this will be completed by later on in the summer.
Good. So Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, Convenor. If I'm being perfectly honest, I'm, I'm a bit astonished by the statement that there's been no assessment of benefits, on front page, assessments of benefits. There's been no assessment of benefits delivered against the expectations of the business case. And this was implemented originally in 2016, 17. So I'm not sure I entirely buy the argument on the next page that, you know, this was all because of the COVID-19 response. I mean, how much did, how much did the Mosaic, I, I can't remember. I, I remember a report going to committee. And it seems like a lifetime ago regarding the, 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 the case and, and the purchase of this. And I can't remember how much it cost. Perhaps officers can confirm how much, but it was substantial, I know that. And I just find that, you know, notwithstanding COVID and we can maybe discount the last couple of years, but it's seven years ago that, that this system has been in use for. And I, I'm just slightly astonished that we, we would go for that length of time and not really assess the benefits delivered against what had been expected in relation to the business case when, when the system was purchased. So I was just really wondering, what did it cost? Why did it take so long, notwithstanding COVID? Because obviously it was implemented back in 2016, 17. And can we maybe get an assurance that it's fine hearing today that we will, you know, this will be finalised during the current financial year, but can we perhaps get an assurance that there will be a report back to scrutiny confirming that that has happened? And what the, the outcomes of the assessment are once that is known?
Good. So someone going to answer these questions and give that reassurance to Bailey McPherson and the rest of the scrutiny committee. Chief Executive.
Thanks, Convenor. So in terms of the costs, Bailey McPherson, unfortunately, I don't have that information ready to hand. And I'm not sure whether other officers on the call do, but I will allow them to come in if they do have that. What might be an idea is that if I take your, your questions away about what was the cost and understanding the, the reasons why the cost benefit analysis hasn't been done, except in the fact that out of the seven years, two years has been COVID, but there was five years before that. And I can give that assurance that once that work's done, then we will report that through scrutiny. But on the first two points, Bailey McPherson, I would need the opportunity just to consider that with the relevant officers and then happy to share that with all scrutiny members.
And that, that's very helpful indeed. And I think something, as you say, shared by, with all members of the committee would be, would be very helpful. I suppose the worry for me, let's discount the two years of COVID, you know, post 2020. But I, I think that, you know, in a wider sense, leaving aside Mosaic itself, I do think we need to be reassured that we do undertake assessments of benefits, particularly of big systems, things that have, you know, and big changes that are undertaken within the council, particularly where there's a large financial cost. I've absolutely no doubt that there will be benefits from having this, you know, having Mosaic. I don't doubt that at all. But I do think we'll have to ensure that, you know, we properly assess the benefits of these against the business case that is made in the first place for purchase. And so I'm grateful for the Chief Executive's assurance. And yeah, I would like to know how much it costs in the first place. But also grateful for the reassurance that scrutiny committee will be advised of the outcome of the assessment in due course.
Thanks. I noticed that Vicky had said her hand up. Vicky, are you looking to make a comment or you prefer to leave it?
I was, but I think Greg covered it and it was just to give assurance that we will report as soon as we've completed that review about the benefits realisation. And I'll oversee that. We do have colleagues on the call that have more in-depth knowledge of the system itself, but I don't think they would have anything to add in terms of that report back.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much for that then. So no other questions on that? We'll move on to the next report then, David.
Yeah, thank you. The fifth report today is, is the third of our follow-ups. And this is the follow-up review of the audit report on climate change. So again, and we were making sure that the recommendations have actually been implemented where possible. So the principal conclusion drawn for this is that while some action has been taken to strengthen the control weaknesses highlighted in the original review, there are still some recommendations that are required to be implemented by management. So we've highlighted the two recommendations there within the bullets. So the first one is in relation to the carbon management plan, which is now known by the, in the council as the Council Net Zero Transition Plan. This is in relation to the carbon managed, carbon management boundary. This has yet to be fully reviewed. And to basically ensure that if there are any other areas that are required within that carbon management plan is intention of the sustainability and climate change manager to take the completed plan to the council management team in November 2022. And then the second recommendation, which is in relation to the public bodies, climate change duties report, which is carried out. So the, the, the climate change team do continue to receive and sorry, undertake basic checks on the data provided to them. And they make queries around obvious anomalies and deviations within the trends. However, the situation is still the same, that they are not provided with information to support the figures, the details of the methodologies used to gather the information or details of the sources used to obtain the information.
So any questions on this report for David? Doesn't look to be then, David. So if that's agreed, we'll move on to the next report.
Okay, thanks very much, Convenor. So the final report this time is in relation to the low emission zone. So this was a review of the forthcoming low emissions zone proposals to ensure that they're in line with legislation, evidence-based and the city centre development plans are aligned to the proposal. So the conclusion that we have from this review is that a sound system of approach was taken in preparing the low emissions zone proposal to achieve objectives in line with the, with the relevant legislation. And the work carried out as part of the audit demonstrated the development of the LEZ scheme compliant with the relevant statutory and regulatory requirements. So in this case, we do not, we didn't make any recommendations at all within this audit. We do provide a wee bit of commentary there in relation to the evidence that was provided and that the council has actually gone and delivered beyond the requirements mandated in the legislative, and sorry, it's within the legislation, particularly in relation to updating the public on the progress of the LEZ scheme's development. And we found that the, the council took a robust evidence-based approach to the development of the LEZ scheme. The governance groups in place were the DLEZDG, which again, I need to find the name, sorry, the Dundee Low Emissions Zone Delivery Group and the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee. So they had oversight of the delivery of the, of the scheme and received regular reports and updates throughout the process.
Go as soon as you're sure.
And thank you, Convenor. And just want to come in from the point of view that I have had oversight through the whole of this process from the minute that I got off my seat when it was announced at one of our party conferences, right through the point where it's actually going to be delivered soon. It has been quite a, quite a long haul and what we've come to is pretty much perhaps what a lot of people had imagined anyway, but there's been such a robust look at everything that has been done. And there's been a lot of work gone into it right across both the civil servants within Dundee City Council and those within the Scottish government and outside agents. So I'd just like to take this opportunity to say thank you for those, those who have been involved. But also the much wider spectrum of the city because as Richard McCready and also Fraser McPherson will know, we had a nice wee huddle up the Locky Road in one of the electric buses before they even came to the city. So the influence that the, the council has had on the bus companies, the 57 used to be the taxi bus going up Locky Road. They've now got the wonderful buses going up there and the scooter cross to St Andrews in nice buses nowadays. And the taxi industry has changed completely in the last 10 years. So the fact that we have been so fast-forward thinking within what we've done within the city, within our fleet, et cetera, I think it's a real testament and to everybody who took those decisions well before I arrived. But that sort of cumulation of the low emissions zone coming together is just part of a bigger jigsaw. So thank you, everybody, for bringing us to this point. And hopefully it will help all those people who are living in the city because it will touch more than just the low emissions zone because of those changing over. So thank you.
Yeah, cheers. Any other questions on or comments on this report? Is that report agreed? Okay, thanks for that then. That's you then, David, I think. Thank you. Fraser, we'll move on to the next report.
Okay, so the next report is item four. It's the Risk Management Annual Report. This was submitted to Policy and Resources on the 21st of February and remitted to scrutiny for further consideration.
Okay, maybe just if I can ask a couple of questions on this report. In, in relation to the, the roofs and sort of legislative or following legislative change, where, where would I find that within this report? What, what, what heading does it come under? And how has it been affected by the sort of knowing we've made an error and it's cost four and a half million quid? And I know that Mr. Emmett earlier said that he's got a number of measures he's, he's going to be putting into place. I think it was a, a risk assurance board. You know, until such times as we've got that, there's no the real assurance that we're we couldn't have made another such error. So how, how was that? How, how would we have seen things moving on, on this report for that? So he'd have been able to tell me.
Thanks, Convenor. So I'll maybe start off the discussion and I don't know whether Mr. Emmett wants to come in. I think the first thing to remember that this is the Corporate Risk Register. So below the Corporate Risk Register will sit individual service risk registers. So what you might see is more detailed information about that specific example that you gave within service risk registers. But in this one, there'll be a number of areas, but probably the main one would be the risk number five about governance and making sure that we've got correct procedures in place to be able to cover things like the legislative changes. So you won't see an individual reference to the roofs project within the Corporate Risk Register. But what you may well do is see particular reference within the service specific ones or when they're looking at specific areas when we're developing pieces of work. I don't know if Mr. Emmett has anything else to add.
Thanks, Convenor. I, I think the only thing perhaps to say about the specific example is that I think officers are very mindful of the circumstances around it. And I know that Mr. Presswood and colleagues in construction services and neighbourhood services have been looking very carefully at the processes for, for dealing with, for dealing with work. So it, it's, it's something that's very much in the forefront of people's minds in terms of managing the risk and the work that we are looking to do as quickly as we can is to provide formal assurance and to ensure that, that, that we can demonstrate in evidence and assure you that we're not in the risk, there isn't a risk that such an occurrence can happen again.
So, so, you know, would, I suppose if it's in the corporate, if it's somewhere in a risk register, it costs four and a half million pound. And if it's covered somewhere in here, which, which particular risk got more serious? Got more risk to the, to us? And how was, how was it moved? Did it move from a sort of six to 16? Until such times as we, we, we've got this other assurance board in place that, that, that makes a real difference. So how does the rest of the risk happening in council filter through to this? And I could see a change that, that I can ask a question on.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. I'll maybe come on that. And apologies for giving you the wrong risk earlier. The risk within the risk register that we would be looking at would be statutory and legislative compliance, which is the corporate risk number nine. And you'll see within that the number of risk-related codes in the titles. It shows inherent risk score and then residual scores. And you'll see there that there is one regarding legal stroke regulatory compliance around NCS 0007, which had an inherent score of 15, but a residual score of 20. I think that's one example. Then you would need to go below the risks to get more of those specific details. But that specific risk in the corporate risk register would be the one that you're referring to, risk number nine.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering if somebody could tell me how it changed then over the period since when we identified the risk? And, and, and I'm not sure that we've got the total resolve yet because I've got a number of reports that are coming forward that may make recommendations on how we best make sure nothing like that happens again. So I would assume that the risk between one month and another went up considerably once the risk was identified as something that we needed to focus on.
So, Convenor, that, that would be correct, depending on the frequency of the review of the risk registers. But what you'll also see is the number of controls that the report that you're referring to have been put in place since we identified the problem. And what that might do is reduce the inherent score to the residual score. But as I say, this report focuses on the corporate risks. Therefore, it will be contained at a high level within risk number nine. But the details you're looking for, we would have to then look at the specific service risk registers. It might not be reflected in the overall score within risk number nine.
But we, you know, we, we tend to look at this to try to assess best how the council is performing. So, you know, you're saying that looking at this is probably a waste of time because everything lies somewhere below that. You know, I, I just, and I'll give you another example. On, I think it's risk 19. It says attainment is, is another issue that we need to focus on. And yet we've cut 1.2 million pound for the attainment challenge and we'll continue to cut similar money over the next few year. There's 22 staff going into education. How did that affect this risk register that I'm looking at? How did that affect this risk register that I'm looking at?
So, Convena, just to go back on my point, I believe the Corporate Risk Register gives scrutiny committee an idea of the Corporate Risk Register and the corporate risks that we face. And then allows members to seek clarification or additional information about specific risks. And I think if you're looking for detailed information, I would advise that we seek that from officers and that's reported back to scrutiny committee. Or indeed a briefing is provided. To go into that granular level of detail about specific risks, I think would be difficult at this meeting. But just to give you that assurance that it does exist and what we're trying to do is capture the service risks and then feed that up into a total risk register.
Okay, then can I ask then that the scrutiny committee receive information of the effect and the potential risk that cutting one point two million pounds from the attainment challenge will have on meeting attainment in the city? Given that it's twenty two jobs, it's likely to be that year on year. And it's bound to have an effect within the Department Risk Register.
So, Convena, I think what-
We kind of cut that level of money without the change in risk.
So, Convena, I think what would be advisable there is that the Executive Director of Children and Families shares the Risk Register with scrutiny. And there's a separate discussion regarding how that risk is being managed and how that risk is being mitigated.
That would be useful. I think it'd be useful to have something circulated to the scrutiny committee reasonably soon on that. So that we have an understanding of the issues that we face. And if, you know, a cause and effect of what we're making decisions on. I'll leave it at that. Is there any other questions on the report? You know, someone, Audrey, you've got your hand up.
Just to say happy to provide that information, Convena, that you've just asked for.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Okay, I've no other questions on this report. I don't see any other ones. So is this report agreed? Thank you. We want the next item then, Tracy.
Thank you. So item five is the internal, sorry, the External Inspection Report for the junction.
Okay, is there any officer looking to say a few words on that?
Yeah, happy to come in, Convena. Just to say that you've got the External Inspection Report from the junction from the Cared Spectre, which we carried out in February. It's a very positive report. It describes the junction as a high performing service and has received grades of good and very good. So therefore no further, more further or in depth scrutiny required, which is good news. Lots of positive comments in there and findings around relationships and how well we've cared for our young people. And of course, part of scrutiny always is always an opportunity to say there's always things that we can continue to improve on. And some of that comment is around plans, which is kind of a common theme that's coming up just now with our planning. So it's work that's well ahead and well underway. So comments and questions. I've also got Glenn Lloyd and Mark McCauley on the call if there's details required. Thanks, Convena.
Also think it's a very positive report as well. So I'll pass you over to Billy McPherson for his question or comment.
Thanks, Convena. Sometimes you don't have a question and simply a comment and the comment's extremely positive. Because not only is this a very good report, but if you look back, it's been consistent. There's been consistent good performance. Excellent performance, in fact, going back years. And so my simple point is really to say, you know, very well done to the staff for their commitment, their hard work. And we very much appreciated if Audrey, Glenn and Mark would take that message back from the scrutiny committee. Because sometimes it's just a good thing to say, thank you very much for a job well done. And it's quite clear that at the junction, we have very committed staff who are performing extremely well, which is much appreciated.
That's agreed. I notice councillor Rendell is looking to make a comment as well.
Yeah, it was similar to Billy McPherson, just to say, you know, I agree, it's a really positive report. And I think I've commented before that often we do things with small numbers of people. And I think this shows in this instance, it's quality and not quantity that is at the heart of things here. And that, you know, one to one relationships are so important in a place like this, you know, we were looking after our young people. So again, just similar to Billy McPherson, just pass on our commendations to the staff and thank you for the report.
Yeah, that's a kiss for the rest of the scrutiny committee as well, I believe. So thanks very much for that. There's no other comments, so we'll move on to the next report.
The next report is item six, Education Scotland HMI Return Visits. Camperdown, Clappington, Rowan Tree and Sidlow View Primary Schools, Crikey High School and Rockwell Learning Centre.
Yeah, I suppose I should say to the scrutiny committee at this stage, we've brought a number of head teachers down here. I think it's still important the head teachers are in schools, given that there's a fair bit of education catch up needing to be done. And there's still sort of staff issues with Covid. So, you know, it's more important that obviously lead officers deal with any questions best they can. But I'm sure that you'll agree, a lot of these reports are excellent and looks like some of the schools, based on where they were, have come an extremely long way.
Thank you, Convena.
Would you want to say a few words, Mrs May?
Yes, thank you again. Yeah, you've kind of covered it. It's a really positive set of reports for four primaries. A secondary school and a Rockwell Learning Centre who were all engaged in HMI work before the pandemic came along. And as you can see, it's, the part of the reports has looked at not just the actions from previous inspections, but also how we've supported our children and young people and their families through Covid. And then looking at, you know, a really positive remarks for all of these schools and establishments as a result of return inspection visits. And all to be a very different way over the last two years. But I think that makes it even all the more positive that there's, you know, that been ongoing improvement during probably the toughest couple of years for our schools and our establishments. So it's just, it's great to see that there's complete sign off from HMI. And that that's because they're absolutely totally satisfied that schools are on a journey of continuous improvement. And so thanks to all of my officers as well who've supported schools to get to that place. And so again, just a really, really positive report. And I have Paul as our Chief Education Officer on the call as well if there's any details or questions. Thank you.
But hopefully Billy McPherson then.
Thanks. And as I said, declarations of interest, my nephew's son and niece's daughter both attend Sidlow View Primary School. But and they're very happy there. And actually, in a way, my main point about both Sidlow View and Rowan Tree are the two that stick in my mind from previous discussions that we've had. And you might remember, I particularly, was it Committee Room One? We were all in and it was boiling hot and it went on for ages and all pre-Covid. But that was a very challenging time in relation to Sidlow View. And I think it's a real testament to the efforts that the staff have put in. And I mentioned particularly, and I'm not detracting from Camperdown, Clappington, the Rockwell Learning Centre or Crikey High School at all. It's simply that the other two stick in my mind because they had very challenging situations in the past. And they've made very substantial progress, which is extremely pleasing to see. So again, another case of saying, you know, very pleased to see the progress and well done to all the staff involved.
Thank you, Billy McPherson.
Okay, councillor Rendell.
Thanks, Convena. I just had a question around whether the inspectors, when they're in the schools, I take it would come in under the health and wellbeing and safety of our pupils. But there were some high level comments in the press around bullying at some of our schools and which I don't necessarily, you know, agree with. But I just wondered if the inspectors questioned the head teachers, you know, if there's a specific part that they look at in terms of bullying and whether there were any concerns raised from the inspectors, because it's not evident from the reports that there were.
Last Mrs May to comment. It's not something that I've seen coming up in any HMI inspection report that get to that detail. But, you know, you obviously have parents that come along that feel that some children are very nice to their children at school. But Mrs May could probably be closer to the coalface and be able to give you a better answer than I could.
That's convenient. And yeah, actually they would. I've been on inspections myself, as you know, in a previous life. As a head teacher, as also an associate assessor and inspected secondary schools across the country. So, yeah, if through report, you know, that as part of an inspection process, we ask for as much feedback and evidence from the community. So we get feedback from staff, parents and pupils for all schools that are in an inspection process. And pupils have the opportunity, as do parents, to bring up things like bullying, absolutely. And as part of an inspection process, that would be followed through. So the fact that there's no reference to any of this in these reports suggests that this was not raised during the time of this ongoing work with HMI. And Paul maybe wants to add, or Pam, sorry, I should have said Pam as a schools manager's on too, but Paul maybe wants to add some detail to that.
Yeah, Paul. You're on mute, Paul.
Thank you, sir. I'm working up my phone. Some technical challenges. Thank you very much, Convena. Thank you, Audrey, and thank you, councillor Rendell. I think just further to Audrey's comments, councillor Rendell, not only did they not find these, but given some of the findings and recommendations from the previous inspections around learning needs, around learning pathways and around wellbeing, they would have specifically been looking for some of these to test, you know, some of that and to assess the evidence. And there was a mixture of in person and online professional dialogue as well. So had there been any significant issues that that absolutely would have been discovered during these processes in these schools?
Thanks very much, Paul. I'm reassured by that. And it just goes to show you shouldn't read, believe every, and you're reading the press. Thank you.
Okay, just to say, Audrey, I think it'd be useful if you could pass on, obviously, a comment from the scrutiny committee to the head teachers to disseminate through the schools. That, you know, I think that the staff have done a marvelous job in bringing these around, but I think we should probably put that out to every school. Given that the Covid situation's been very difficult, the number of staff that have been off and, you know, the number of staff that have had to up the game and do that bit more just to keep schools on the go while through this difficult time. You know, even looking after their own kids while they were self isolating and holding delivering lessons out at the same time, couldn't have been particularly easy. So I think it's remarkable. And, you know, some of these reports were probably the worst or among some of the worst that I'd seen in the early stages of that. So bringing school around, it just shows that it can be done, just that we've got to make sure that new school slips back as bad as that again. So, but, you know, I think it's a great testament for those that are involved in the change that they've brought around. So please pass on that from the scrutiny committee.
It would be a pleasure to pass that on. Thank you.
No problem. There doesn't appear to be any further comments on this report. Is this report agreed? We'll move on to the next report then, Tracy.
Okay, so item seven is the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three Internal Audit Plan.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Convena. So this is our annual Internal Audit Plan report that we bring up at this time of the year. Every, everybody for committee approval. So just to give a wee bit of summary around this. This is obviously detailing the works that we're looking to do within the twenty two, twenty three Internal Audit Plan. Also provide the amendments to the twenty twenty one Internal Audit Plan and give a progress update on the twenty one, twenty two Internal Audit Plan as well. Which is similar to the reports you've had at previous scrutiny committees. So developing the plan for the current year, we do take notice of the risk management framework, the maturity of the organisation. We do consider the risk registers, the corporate risk register, the Covid nineteen risk register and the service level risk registers where appropriate. And we do make sure that the topics that we put into the audit plan are cross referenced to these registers with the risk codes and inherent risk scores. As well as that, we also have a stakeholder consultation exercise that we carry out where we meet the service management teams, the ICT Extended Management Team, the council's Corporate Risk Management Coordinator, and other key stakeholders such as the KPMG, who are our council's co sourcing internal audit partner, Audit Scotland, the external auditor, and we've also had scrutiny committee elected member consultation as well. So all these, all these things come together to put obviously planned areas into the plan. And so also to relate to four point six, in relation to paragraph four point eight, just want to highlight that also the co sourcing partnership with KPMG does come to an end on the 30th of June. And in conjunction with ourselves and senior management, we are looking at the options around resourcing for the audit plan for twenty two, twenty three. So the plan potentially will be subject to change throughout the year as we look at our arrangements with either the co sourcing arrangement or other resourcing opportunities. And in relation to the plan for twenty one, twenty two, that also will also give an update on each of the audits that are of where they are in place at the moment. And then we will be looking to bring forward the vast majority of the final reports to the June committee, which will be used for the assurances.
Okay, thank you, David. Is there any questions for David on this report? Is the report agreed? Okay, David, thanks very much for that. And thanks for taking the time to go around as many people to canvass what we'd like to see scrutiny focused on for next year. So thanks for that.
Thank you, Billy, Convena.
Tracy, we'll move on to the next report then.
Okay, so so the next report is the Dundee City Council Audit Scotland Annual Audit Plan for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
Is there anyone looking to lead us through that or?
Hi, Convena. Just talk you through it briefly. Appreciate that.
Okay, Richard.
Okay, so our plan's included at page one hundred and three to one hundred and twenty six of your papers. And this gives an overview of the external audit work plan for twenty one, twenty two financial year. Just to avoid any confusion, although it's, appreciate we're now into twenty two, twenty three, but this mainly focuses on order of the twenty one, twenty two accounts. That's why I use a slightly different internal audit plan. So you may or may not notice that our plan's a slightly different layout from this year. So I'll just briefly talk you through the main areas. I won't speak for too long about it. And then myself and Neil will be happy to answer any questions you've got. And just the main body of the report, there's just one paragraph, the introduction I just need to highlight. So paragraph eleven on page one hundred and eight explains, under international standard auditing two forty, members of this committee are required to communicate to us any frauds or suspected frauds that you're aware of. Or if you've got any concerns about the arrangements in place to prevent fraud within the organisation. So we therefore ask if you do have any such concerns that you have raised them during this meeting. Or if you provide in contact directly after the meeting, just make us aware of those. So we are required to ask that after all audited bodies. And moving on then to the main body of the plan. The first section on pages one hundred and nine to one hundred and fifteen of your papers covers our approach to financial statements audit for both the council and charitable trusts. So this details the work required to undertake to support opinions on the twenty one, twenty two accounts. And it also explains how we target this work to address the risk of material misstatement. If you look at exhibit one, this sets out the materiality levels that we've set for twenty one, twenty two council audit. And also explains the basis of these figures. When we're talking about materiality, this is effectively the level of tolerance we have for errors in the accounts. So what we're looking at there is what errors there could be in the accounts and we wouldn't judge them to impact on our audit opinion that the account still provide a true and fair view of the body's financial affairs. So as I say, these are effectively the levels of tolerance. So we're never going to get them a hundred percent right. Hopefully get them as close as possible to that. But we would accept some small level of error. To move on then to exhibit two, and this sets out any significant risk material misstatement identified to twenty one, twenty two audit. So these are the areas where there's an increased likelihood or an opportunity for financial statements to be materially misstated. You see from exhibit two, there's actually only two such risks identified for this year's audit. The first of these relates to the opportunity for management to override the existing controls within the organisation and potentially to manipulate financial position reporting the accounts. I should highlight in relation to this that it's a standard risk required for all audits. So this isn't in any way a comment on the management of Dundee City Council. But we are required under C two forty to design audit procedures to address this risk as part of the annual audit. And you see that exhibit two, the planned audit procedures are shown there in the final column. Similarly, we've identified audit procedures to address the other significant risk material misstatement for twenty one, twenty two, just shown in exhibit two. And this relates to the subjectivity in the valuation of the council's land and buildings. And therefore the procedures identified cover our review of the basis of these valuations and how we gain assurance that those valuations are accurate. And the remainder of section one of the plan, details or considerations of the other potential risks to financial statements and the work we'll do on those. Also sets out some additional detail on our audit approach to the audit of the group financial statements. And the work we have to do to inform the audit opinions on the management commentary, annual governance statement and annual revaluation report. Also provides some further details in our approach to the audit of the three sets of accounts to the charitable trusts. But as I'm sure you appreciate, they're fairly straightforward audits compared to the audit of the council's accounts. Moving on then to section two of the plan, and this covers our additional responsibilities under code of audit practice. And also requirement for us to consider best value upon the order. So you may be aware that the code of audit practice requires public sector auditors in Scotland to consider four wider audit dimensions. And these cover financial management, financial sustainability, And these cover a financial management, financial sustainability, transparency and value for money. So that's shown in exhibit four on page one hundred and sixteen of your papers. You may also recall that our annual audit report follows that layout as explained by those sections and we provide judgements and conclusions of each of those areas. In exhibit five on page one hundred and seventeen, this then sets out any specific risks we've identified for twenty-one, twenty-two audit in relation to our wider code responsibilities. And again, it details our response to these risks. It might become a surprise to you that all of these reflect the ongoing impact of Covid nineteen on the council's operations and financial position. So as part of our audit work, we'll review and monitor progress the council in responding to these challenges and we'll report on this within our twenty-one, twenty-two annual audit report. Paragraph forty-two explains that as part of our annual audit work, we'll also follow up on the progress being made in response to the recommendations in the best value assurance report, which was published in September twenty twenty. And we've also highlighted there paragraphs forty-five to fifty-three, some other wider code areas that we'll focus on. A lot of those have already come up during the meeting and relate to the mental health services review, the Olympia pool issues, the roof and repair issues, and also the paperwork that we discussed during all this meeting. Again, in each case, we'll report back on these as part of our twenty-one, twenty-two annual audit report and also conclude on how well we think the council's responded to those issues and the adequacy of the action being taken in response. The next section of the plan sets out the reporting arrangements and timetable for our twenty-one, twenty-two audit. So exhibit seven sets out our planned outputs for the year and which committee meeting they'll go to. And exhibit eight sets out the proposed timetable for the final accounts audit to enable us to certify the audit of annual accounts after scrutiny meeting on the twenty-sixth of October, which have agreed with offices as an appropriate timescale for this year. We recall that over the last two years, we've pushed back the audit timetable due to the impact of Covid and not signed off to the end of November. So while we have brought it forward slightly this year, we're not quite in a position to sign it off the end of September, but the expectation would be going forward from next year, we would go back to the pre-Covid timetable and get the account signed off by the end of September. The final two paragraphs of this section just detail the agreed fee for twenty-one, twenty-two audit. So for the council, this represents a seven thousand five hundred and thirty pound increase or two point one percent increase on the fee level for the council last year. But the fee levels for the three charitable trusts have been frozen at the twenty, twenty-one levels and so that totals four thousand seven hundred and eighty pounds. Yeah, just to finish up, the final section of the plan just explains our approach to work within to audit to ensure that we maximise effective use of audit resources and don't duplicate their work. And it also details the internal arrangements we have in place to ensure independence of objectivity to conduct the audit and also the quality control arrangements. I wasn't going to go through any of this in detail, but as with the rest of the plan, happy to pick up any queries that members may have on this or our general audit approach for twenty-one, twenty-two. Thank you, Convenor.
Okay, I wonder if there's any questions for Richard on this report? No? Can I maybe just make a comment to the chief exec? So regarding the earlier comment you made regarding any suspicious fraud or otherwise, and I wonder if the chief executive could perhaps consider how we deal with that next time? Because I personally have raised issues of fraud, but raised it via chief executive, never brought them to the attention of auditors before. I've been very happy in how things have done, although some of that, or at least one of the cases is quite ongoing and is still subject to police inquiry. So we're not really in a position to deal with that or say too much about it. But I'm wondering how we best advise elected members that if there's a suspicion of fraud or there's that anonymous information that they get, how they best bring that forward to the auditors as well as the chief executive, so as that no stones left unturned and making sure that things are dealt with? Because I'm certainly guilty of bringing the things forward to the former chief executive, but certainly never at that time brought it forward to the auditors.
Thanks, Convenor.
Greg, are you going first there?
I'm happy, Convenor, to let Richard come in. I can see he's got his hand up. So if you're comfortable, I'll let Richard come in, then I'm happy to follow Richard.
Yeah, thanks for that. Richard?
Yeah, it was just very briefly on that, Convenor, that we are satisfied that we're being kept up to date by officers of any, so I can be aware of the case you're talking about and I can have been kept aware and officers being open with us. But it's really just to give you the opportunity, if there is anything that you feel has been raised and isn't being dealt with adequately, or if you've got any concerns about the over action procedures in place to prevent fraud, that you communicate them to us to make sure that we consider them part of the audit. I mean, as I say, we've had discussions like that with the chief exec, so we're not, we've not got any concerns on our side, but we do require just to make you aware of that, that you can come directly to ourselves. So I'll let the chief executive come in there.
Certainly likewise, I've no concern on how the things have been dealt with. It's just that if that was a part of the loop, then I didn't include you in it. But, you know, I was always reasonably happy that, you know, the chief executive, once it was established, there would have been, the auditors would have been involved. Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Just to follow up to say that if any allegations are made to me, these are dealt with through the council's normal channels and Audit Scotland and Richard directly as the lead auditor would then be notified. So just to give scrutiny that assurance that that process is in place, along with potentially the officers who investigate, which would include people like Roger Many, the chief internal auditor and the head of people as and when appropriate. So the systems are in place and I think you can take that assurance that both myself and Richard have just given you.
Okay, thanks very much for that. So no other questions then, so that means close the business. Thanks very much for your time. And as anybody that's standing again, wish them well and anybody that's moving on, good luck in the future.